Here, uh, just this meeting called order will start off with a roll call.
Consular.
Trueshere.
Tom Partridge.
Steve Frakes.
Drew Cantman.
Scott Dooley.
Katie Henson.
John Latoya.
Joy Carter.
All right, welcome everyone. We'll move on with the pledge of allegiance. Having the youngsters here all start.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in this law, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Uh, moving on to good news, uh, phone upgrade, is that John?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you give us an update on what we've been two weeks in now? A week and a half.
Yeah, it's been.
Seems like a month.
Awesome, that it's been great. Um, it, the changeover from AT&T was good. Um, they said the cut over would be about ten thirty, by eleven, we were rolling. Um, we did some training with the secretaries and some, uh, the admins prior to the rollover. Um, we got what's, uh, a custom app basically to use the phone. So, um, basically each of the offices and the admins then can log in and they can make school calls on their phone with the school extension or, um, if like we're getting a call from the outside world, you can answer it on your cellphone. Um, and it looks like you're calling from the school. So, and then of course, uh, the voicemail, we've got that finally, which has been great. Uh, especially with our fee stuff that's been going on and, uh, our new students coming in. So, parents can leave messages for the district. And, uh, also all the teachers will have, uh, voice, voicemail. So, the way that's gonna work is, uh, when a parent or someone leaves a voicemail, the WAV file will show up in their email and then they can see that they've got a voicemail and then they can listen to it there or logging through their desk phone to see, to hear it. Uh, we're working on paging. And, uh, we're gonna move over, we're gonna test it out, we're gonna verify it on Friday. But it looks like our new bell system in the high school junior high will be through our paging system as well. So, it'll be a tone instead of a bell.
Cause our bell system is dying.
We got you.
Yeah.
Those voicemails will go then, uh, to an email that'll be typed out or kind of voiced, uh, text kind of deal.
Well, uh, so the, the users that have the, that app, uh, can have that transcription. But for the teachers, um, it'll show up as a WAV file in their email. Yeah, but they can listen to it through their, you know, through Chromebook or through their PC. If anyone do it, yep.
And it's working in all the classrooms?
Yeah, so far, yeah, I've been walking around. Every once in a while, I gotta reset a phone, but it'll be a few things, well, a few hookups maybe, but for the most part, it's been real solid. So, way better than what we had, for sure. Yep.
Any questions, John?
I haven't had a drop call so far.
What's that?
No drop call so far.
I haven't.
So far, good.
Right. I haven't heard anything.
I haven't noticed my phone resetting or dropping.
That's the worst thing that we experience. It's not very good customer service. Yeah, sometimes I'd say I might have a terrible Monday today, so if it cuts out, I'll call you back. I didn't hang up.
Don't take it personal.
It's not always a school district that I've experienced that. It happens other places. It was timed for it up very.
All right, Mr. Say, the century walk.
Yes.
That fits in your wheelhouse, right?
Yeah, so a new year, and I think I sent pictures and got them out to you, but it's a center walk that was purchased by the Rackage Schools Foundation. Um, and it's right when you first walk in, that left hallway. Um, it's kind of a place for students. It has counting, um, planets, so there's that academic piece to it, but also they can kind of get their wiggles out, if you will, so they can kind of hop on one foot or every other foot and things like that. So, um, it looks really good. Um, if you guys are ever over there and you wanna see it, tell me now, I can show it to you. It's very cool, so.
Yeah, picture looks neat.
I was just gonna say, pictures look great.
Yeah, it looks really cool, very sharp.
Really nice person, isn't it?
Yeah.
I believe the foundation funded that about three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And because of everything else, it's just never, it's been completed. I did send that email to Lori Frakes, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, she said that, yeah.
And I'm sure you'll put something up.
Yep.
Eventually as well.
Yep.
Very good. Welcome aboard, by the way.
Thank you.
Had you here since we've, uh, so we got you on, so very good. All right, uh, next is, uh, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Um, I just.
Would you stand up, please state your name, so that folks at home know who we are.
Um, I know Perry and I have talked quite a bit about this, but I just wondered, I've been getting a lot of questions about the sex ed and health curriculum. If you could just verify and just put it to us that this is not going to continue because, like I said, I keep getting questions about it, so.
What, I believe that was February. I don't have anything in front of me. You probably would know better than I do. But I did look back, February board meeting, we had board policy on that. You can remember, we did not accept that.
Right. Yeah.
Our policy was unchanged. I can't remember the policy number, so I apologized.
Yeah.
But, uh, the board did not accept that.
And we will not be teaching that curriculum.
Correct. Correct.
That's been officially set back to ISB, whoever the powers that be.
We didn't have to send anything in. I was not required to send anything in, but it is a hard run board policy.
Okay.
Somehow, you shared with me some site that tracked it.
Yeah.
It did show up there.
Yeah, and it did say that Rackage had opted out, so.
As far as I know, just total disclosure, full disclosure, one, we haven't seen anything from them. They remember they had until August. You remember us talking about this back in the fall, to develop a policy? Board policy came out and said you could do several things. This board said no, we're not adopting that policy. Anything to do with that, we're not teaching, uh, that. As far as I know, I believe after, like in August, they have to get the parameters out. I think then possibly yearly, I have to go in to what's called Iowa's in their system and mark that we're not teaching that standard.
Okay.
But I don't, I haven't seen that yet either. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
That, yes, it's absolutely postponed on the February meeting.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Mm-hmm.
So, does that mean then we won't be able to teach sex education? Is that my understanding correct? That you have to do that one or you don't do any?
No, no, we've got some health standards still in there.
Okay.
And I don't remember the policy right now, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was just, I was researching, um, today. And it just, I was reading that if you don't choose to use the national, um, sex ed curriculum that the ISB is adopting, then you cannot do any sex ed. You can have health, but you can't have sex education.
Right, there, there are pieces that are health related and they're not sex ed related. I can share that policy with you and tell you what we have to do.
No, I just, yeah, I just didn't like, we don't, aren't gonna be offering any sex education.
We don't currently.
Oh, we don't currently?
No.
No.
They did when I, my kids were, they definitely did when my kids were.
It's part of the health curriculum.
Part of the health curriculum.
It's not like teaching anything.
No.
No, that's what I'm confused, okay. Maybe I'm, I must not be being clear, I'm sorry. So, because we're not adopting that, we get to continue teaching within the health class of the sex education?
We're not teaching to the national standards, do you know what that makes sense? Or whatever they adopt under this new one.
Okay. So, I guess, I think what she's just trying to say, so we won't change what we're teaching now.
Correct.
We just continue with what we have.
Correct. Statistically.
Yeah.
All right, any other public comments? All right, hearing none. Uh, is there any items on the consent agenda that anyone wanted to remove? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Derek?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew K?
Yes.
Drew S?
Yes.
Ivo, yes. All right, moving on. Um, it looks like we'll start with presentations there. Todd, you've got the floor.
I'm on the right. And everybody's got a copy of that report?
We do.
All right, I wanna take a look at that, so. First of all, uh, I had to take a look at, at all this. Kayla couldn't make it tonight and she's sort of my brain. You got whatever I brought in here today. I would do my best. But, uh, no, we had a really great meeting. I know, uh, you're part of it, I can remember who else was there, yeah. Uh, and, uh, just a lot of work activities, a lot of brain power in the room. Again, I didn't represent much of that. Uh, listened to a lot of things. I think it was very provocative, uh, discussion and kind of expanded. From art, it expanded, definitely expanded my understanding of, you know, potential futures and I think, uh, speaker of the group, it's sort of went through lots of scenarios, some they never, you know, thought of, and as you can tell, we're extremely impressed by, and others that were, we're sort of like, oh, yeah, maybe that's something to think about, so. Don't wanna, you know, really walk you through every item of the report, but I do wanna just give a real quick summary of the, the ideas. So, the first thing we always do is look at that, how you live right now. Um, so I believe here it's called S1, but basically it's your, your status quo. Uh, you can make some improvements, you can fix a few things, but for the most part, from a functional standpoint, you're gonna teach things in the locations to the grade levels currently. So, from there, we went, uh, basically, if it makes any sense, we got bigger, we added some schools. Um, with the idea of, of a, a model that really delivers primary, really the earliest education, uh, in a local manner. So, you can, uh, have your pre-kindergarten, your kindergarten, your first graders. One spot there. Then the, uh, next thing was really looking at a three campus type system. Uh, had some, some pros and cons there we get to. Um, and then the last three were really sort of different variations on some things I think have been considered in the past. So, the idea of getting the two buildings, uh, which really would obviously need a this building. Um, then, then having another location that would really add to your, uh, take care of your, your pre-K through five, uh, situations. Uh, then you bring everybody to one campus so that we either build something or build something out here. Uh, and then the third, or the last idea, S6, was really, uh, add on to make one, uh, really, one building for the whole district. So, uh, with that, the, the scenarios, obviously the last three, from a purely functional lens, educators looking at the best way to allocate resources, work together collaboratively, support children, support curriculum, support, uh, all the non-educational needs that students have, is they really felt like getting, uh, fewer buildings that would allow educators to collaborate more and all the wraparound services, for lack of a better, better term, everything from your special education to social work to, uh, accelerated, uh, to athletics. All of those things could really be improved if you got down to one or two facilities. It would just make it a lot easier for everybody to see every kid. And that, so those, those three were, uh, the last three were really seen as, as strengths. However, uh, we, we want, we prefaced all of, of that meeting with, this is really looking through an educator's eyes at things, which is very important. Uh, however, uh, we understand that this is one lens, uh, really the three lenses, uh, that any great uh, strategic plan or facility plan can look at. Educators are, you know, if they could, they would have the best facility with best support in one location with all the, the, you know, and everyone would magically appear in the morning and disappear in the afternoon to be taken care of. That's, that's all. Now, the next lens, and the one that I believe we're gonna begin discussing, uh, in the future here, is community. Obviously, schools don't live in a vacuum, they live in communities. And in this case, plural, uh, you have several communities, you're very stretched out, and that was a, a huge thing, if you look through the comments on the individual exercises there. That the educators understood, there was some, some real strengths, uh, to having these mobile locations like you do in status quo. It's, it's great that, uh, each or most of your communities have a presence. And, and that, at the same time, there's also a cost to that. And the cost can be busing, the cost can be time, the cost can be equity. So, when you look through all those comments, uh, that was sort of the theme we, we found, was there's a happy, that we're hoping to find a happy medium, they wanna find a happy medium between delivery and support. And that's sort of the big, then the third lens, and that's the big lens, uh, that a lot of times will drive final decisions, is money. And how you, you know how you live right now. Uh, as you get further down that spectrum, uh, from S1 to S6, is there's an investment that's gonna have to have some support. And, uh, I think the, the big driver of getting that support is getting the community lens on board. And understandable, you know, the best plan in the world goes on the shelf unless the community supports it. And that's, that's really sort of our next level of work, is to understand what is the right thing. And we threw some wild ones out, you know, everything from, like I said, little bitty, uh, schools in, in several communities to one big school here, to, well, maybe all the school doesn't need to be here, so this is the right place for it, even though it's geographically centered. Is it near the kids? Is it, is it supported with the, uh, infrastructure? All those things, so, um, with that, really just kind of, if you've had a chance to look at the report, it's kind of the often end question. I found it a great exercise and it seemed like everybody was ready to roll up their sleeves and dive in on that.
You know, I think, well, just tell you what my thoughts are, and it was, it was interesting to see, uh, you know, they came up with six different scenarios here. And, uh, uh, and the kind of pros and cons of all of those, so, you know, I think this is a fantastic start. It'll be interesting to see where you go after your next, you know, community engagement and things like that. You know, I, I, uh, I'm just curious, I think this is, it's a great start.
Yeah. It's, it always shocks us, since, um, we can usually start the ball rolling because we're kind of the foreigners of the initial discussions. But, uh, once that ball gets rolling, uh, once in a while, you'll get, you'll be surprised how many ideas that we didn't think of and ones that were considered here that come out and I told them, uh, when we first started that meeting, that chances are where we started, really not where we're gonna end up. It's gonna be at least nuanced, uh, or, or right of where we thought we were headed, but at the same time, I've had ones where we thought we were going here and ended up over here, and at the end of the day, that's what people would support and.
Is, is this the, did the group vote or something? Is that what?
Yeah, that was sort of their, their support and lending support. Uh, you know, it's a very small group, looking at, at things very specifically, but I think it's, I, I wouldn't, I would have been surprised if it didn't kind of follow that curve. I don't think people are extremely happy with the opportunities as educators they've got right now. Mainly the cons, the pros, I think, and everybody's excited about those. Um, I think there's a little bit of trepidation over the idea of condensing everything, uh, into one place. Uh, can your, can the roads handle it? Can, uh, can neighbors handle it? Can, uh, the parents figure out how to navigate drop off? With a lot more busing and a lot more high school kids zooming around. So, you know, things that we expect and we can work through, but it gives us targets, if we can get a communication. If they're concerned about it, parents are definitely gonna be concerned about it. Other thoughts or questions on the, the report or kind of next steps or?
Yeah, next step, when is next step?
We have, we have not set the date. One of the things that's interesting is, uh, we've been, we've been kind of working, some of you probably feel at the sales base, but at a very deliberate pace. Um, number one, because of the crazy world we're in right now, nobody's really excited to take on a big question.
The economy's not going your way.
Uh, and people are just kind of absurd, to tell you the truth. Uh, I try not to be, but even I get down once in a while on this, so. And something as big as this is gonna take some soap time. Most people would be surprised you'd even, or even discuss it, to tell you the truth, out on their radar. Um, however, uh, things like economy, population changes, growth or lack of growth, uh, EAB changes, all of those things seem to be converging. And, uh, as soon as they kind of go through the great filter of whatever the next six, six to eight months are, I think you're gonna have a really good understanding of, number one, what people are, are looking for and, and will support, as well as how much of, how much of this is, is, uh, good policy versus necessary adjustments. And you never wanna get behind the necessary adjustment piece, cause that, that leads to a lot of frustrations uh, on people. In other words, we had to make a decision, this decision, every school district, I'm a former school board member, we've done that. Uh, BAV dropped in oh eight. And in, in ten, we had to make a decision we didn't think we had to make. You know, so, I think it, it's really good that you're out in front of this. I know, uh, from what Perry has, has shared with us, twenty twenty-four is sort of when some economic opportunities open up in the district as far as past investments. Uh, getting to that point that they either need extended or, or re, uh, allocated. So, um, that's sort of always been our, our sort of imaginary finish line. Whether that is the, the end or kind of the soft end of, of that, really depends on all of you. From an election cycle standpoint, you've got this coming November, you've got next spring, um, but I'm assuming some of you will be running. Uh, I always try to avoid that election like plague. It's one of my least favorite times to run any sort of question, um, because suddenly I'm part of a campaign for school board. I don't like this. I've done that in my practice, so. Um, and then there is no fall, actually. So, that really pushes you to the spring of twenty-four, uh, or the fall of twenty-four. And anyway, it's anybody's guess where the world will be by then, I. Uh, so with that, I think it makes some sense to do some, some outreach. As school comes back, we, we'd like to get some backpack stuffers, uh, for some of the back-to-school pieces to get out there, get the parents thinking about this. And then, um, we would really like to do some outreach in the communities, uh, maybe talk to some community leaders and get their take on what, what's the right way to get good information from Reths or, obviously, or Andalusia or Taylor Ridge or here. Uh, and just make sure that we're tapping into the right sources and then do a similar exercise, uh, with a, a group. And I think we've talked about putting that together, Scott couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, really sort of that community group and get these things on the table from a community perspective, really by, I think the goal is before the, have a report like this before the school board show, that, now with Scott. Yeah, December, October, come. Right, so that, that would be, so our work would get done by, uh, you know, October, we get some support, we share some things with you and then really look at, at that. Uh, but we don't like to do anything in, in December or January, just it seems like all the sports converge and no one's in the mood for anything but getting through Christmas.
Holidays, right.
Right, so, so that's our goal, is, is really to do some outreach and, uh, get, get it on the parents radar and then, uh, do the action plan, September, October, get you your report, uh, right there on the school board show. And, uh, hopefully some of you are coming up this year. I, there's rumors of I'll be a bee costume, I don't know what that means. Already planning my sick day. Yeah, so other questions and thoughts?
How do you get community involvement?
It is, uh, it's really, uh, it's rarely a problem to get, uh, angry people involved. Um, someone who thinks, well, someone who's chief may be, so if you're from a community that is nervous, um, you will be involved. But the, the biggest thing we wanna understand is who are the people who, uh, you know, hold some influence, some perspective in each of the communities and get them, uh, in the same room, talking together, educated on it. And we really rely on them for outreach, to bring their ne, friends and neighbors. Uh, cause honestly, we don't, it's one of the few things that is rather apolitical if it's done right. Uh, in this very polarized time where everything seems to have a, uh, one side or another. In general, you may have people who are neighbors who see, you know, uh, nothing in their lives together, uh, on the same page. Will, will be on the same page for something like this. You have people who may never support, uh, you know, any government entity. But it's their school system, it's their kids, so they're totally, uh, engaged on that. So, our, our goal is that we like to work with about twenty people as sort of a good cross-section of your overall population, community age, parent, non-parent. And really kind of build the, the group out from there. And then the other big thing will be we're relying on the principals. Uh, because no one cares as much about the school as a parent. And the principals know the parents who both get things done and, uh, can motivate others to get things done. And those, those will be really important, cause those are all voters. Um, and they're all people who really need to support this for it to happen. And then finally, continuing the teacher effort. Uh, one of the great, uh, one of the things that we found with all of these plans, whether they take a vote or whether they don't take a vote, is they're one and supported or not supported from the inside out. So, if people don't see educators interested and, you know, a part of the process, they'll be dubious and they probably should. Uh, it just be, and it's kind of weird, you're a, you've probably got a lot of educators that live in the district, you probably got a lot of them that, that, yeah. Uh, the, the important thing is not to use, um, educator address as a, a litmus test. Because for the most part, uh, you have to look at educators as an extension of a community. Whether they live in it or not, they have a huge impact on it. And they may know more about the school system than the average, uh, person lives here. So, you have to invite them in. Uh, when, once you get down to asking for permission, well, then we'll talk. Until then, it, it's really important to have participants. Anything else?
So, Todd, correct me, I'm working with you and Dr. Guffel, making sure I'm, we're addressing your question. Uh, those are community meetings, they're open.
Yeah, we'll, well, we'll do a.
It'll be a roundtable.
Yeah.
Discussion, somewhat, we're replicating it.
Yeah, and as I, I don't know if anybody else used to listen, watch Parks and Rec, uh, show. They would have these open meetings and just be people like standing up voting and yelling at everyone. The joke was, you hear yelling, I hear people, uh, you know, being concerned loudly. But, uh, we try to avoid, uh, what we find out is I shouldn't be leading this process, no, no, you should. It should really be community-led, uh, which is really where that group, cross-section group should have a leader. But then when you have a community meeting, we'll do a presentation, uh, we'll always have an exercise for folks to do. And then the most important thing is you get six or eight people who lives, live in the community, work in the community, have a vested interest around the table, answering questions together. And it's so much easier than having a, uh, what do you call it, a forum or something where I'm up here telling people what I think they all need to know and then asking if they have any questions. And then you just get yelled at for like three hours. But, uh, when you get people, uh, what we find is people, oh, well, this is not what I thought it would be, this is actually trying to get something done. Strict time limit of, you know, sixty, ninety minutes, there's open, there's a close, and here's. People will, will steal, uh, you know, a valuable sixty or ninety minute window once a month for a couple of months to give you that, that input, as long as they feel, you know, it's right. And they've learned something, they've got to express their ideas and it's all transparent, folks, so. That's, the other big piece is Scott, is I would, he is great at doing a hybrid model. And I know it's an educator, that's a scary word right now, but, uh, basically understanding that you're not gonna get everybody out of their pajamas. Uh, so there are ways to do some different outreach. Uh, if everybody won't show up at the gym on a Wednesday night or something like. Uh so there are ways to do some different outreach. Uh if everybody won't show up at the gym on a Wednesday night or something like that. So uh we'll have to look at that. We'll do a little polling to make sure. Uh we did it at Arthur Blumington and it was really, it was good because once again, people kind of strung out uh a large, wide area. And giving input was important to them, but some of them couldn't make a thirty minute drive on a Wednesday night in the middle of the night or during harvest or. Other. Now, I think it's a, I, I was really, I was really excited. You put a great team together. We had a lot of, a lot of different ideas and, and folks that didn't, didn't walk in the room with preconceived notions, but I think that it's always important for the internal team.
You get good participation with everybody there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think so. It was, we had about fifteen people, twenty people in November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two fifteen, twenty, about on the day.
Yeah, that's really good. Yeah, the first, and I apologize on petition for the first one, but uh that was really more about setting the, setting the tone and what, that, that kind of gave us the margin order to come up with six, six sort of seed scenarios to talk about. It really came down to distance, collaboration, equity. Uh things are really important for the. Well, I will look forward to seeing you in a month or so.
As always, if you need anything from us, let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Now, are there some new faces?
Uh we've all been here for the last few months, probably, probably new.
Okay. Thank you. Eyes, I have terrible eyesight, iffy memory once in a while, so I apologize.
We'll have a safe drive home.
I will, I will.
Thank you, well, thank you, thank you.
I'll get with uh Dr. Cuffell, I'm sure he started in September.
Next step.
Next step.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, let's move on with the uh twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three tenant budget. Is that Jamie or Perry or a combination?
A combination, but Jamie's gonna give it to overview. Remember, you know, this is what we know now.
Yep.
Uh information, uh we do it a little differently and which I think is really good protocol and strange when I came here. Uh a lot of districts do August, September. We do our first tenant budget in July and I think there's a lot of good in doing that. And uh it'll be on display tomorrow um as well. Then August will tighten it up a little bit. Then September, when final approval is, everybody kind of remembers that. I think Jamie's gonna work on, she's, it's pretty detailed in here, it's a little different format uh for each of you. Um but I think she's gonna need to summarize on the first page. There are some things before you get started, Jamie. Uh we've lost some money in Title One, Title Two, and I'm trying to figure out, and the only thing I can figure out is because of free deals for everyone last year. Uh there are a number of people who fill out forms, but a qualify just went down, so I'm trying to get some answers. Are they gonna do anything about that? Because they gave the waiver and are they gonna make adjustments and that kind of thing, but uh there's a little change there. I'll turn it over, Jamie, sorry if I said too much.
All right, so like Perry mentioned, we have a slightly new format this year, so um one piece that's similar is the cover sheet. That's where we list each fund and the total spread to spend for what is coming here. So as a review, our operating funds consists of the education fund, operations and maintenance, transportation and working cash. This is where most of our day-to-day expenses are paid from and working cash there to support those areas if needed. The goal, and as you can see how we budget, is that you don't tap into working cash. And then the remaining funds are more restricted to a specific purpose, so those are debt service, which is where our debt payments are paid from. I M R and social security are where those required benefits and uh required services for the action and retirement are paid from. Capital projects is where our facility tax comes into and we pay for permanent fixtures out of there. Court time pays for areas that reduce risk for the district and firelight safety pays for improvements related to keeping buildings, buildings in our district safe. So then what's a little different is what follows um behind the summary page. Each fund details the revenue and expenditures by source. So this year you'll notice debt revenue sources are broken down by local, local funds, state funds, federal funds and other financing sources. Those other financing sources are transfers that would possibly come in. We have tried to do that for years. And then uh like borrowing proceeds. Usually we don't see much push in there. And then our expenditure sources are broken down by wages, benefits, services, supplies, equipment, improvement and payments to other governmental units. So those payments to other governmental units are payments to um like the Black Hawk area, especially uh other government units where we might get professional development from. You'll notice that there's a pie chart with each fund that gives more visual of how those funds are broken down. And then with each fund, there's a projected beginning balance, uh that could change a bit because as we go through the audit, they will book entries that should impact those amounts that they should have in the law. And then our revenue and expenditures are based on a combination of trend analysis and, you know, changes, so um any questions there, we can give more detail on. And then as you remember, will probably remember, we got this expanded term fund, but we're utilizing reserves for um possible equipment and construction needs. We're happy to share more detailed information if you guys would like to see that and let us know.
The uh, the transportation fund, uh how much did we raise our fuel expenditures or expected? How many, what'd you go up on that? Or did you have to go well?
Let's see, we caught high, high price fuel, whatever, first year, half of Black House this year. Well, we gotta look at some of it, we get a price.
I believe that was a year ago.
Awesome, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we took advantage of that buck seventy, ninety diesel, locked in whatever, twenty something thousand gallons.
Not enough.
Well, we couldn't store it.
Yeah.
I'd like to have that right now again.
Yeah.
So we did go up quite a bit because uh our last fill-up, for lack of a better term, was probably May. We needed diesel, so that was about five dollars or something. Tried to keep that number in perspective. When you see that deficit, and that is one of them, is transportation time. Remember, we budget for buses in case we need them.
Yeah, how many are buses for in there, Greg?
We, we have three in here in the east. Uh we've got uh a couple vans that would be replaced, uh the gray ones. I need to talk with Steve and I believe that's Gray about where we want to go with that. Um because they need replacement. We tried to account for all that and talk about that deficit. Most times we don't go into there, but what if we did? Again, it's a best guess of what may happen. Uh we bought three in the spring and we got one more coming, two.
We had two usuals.
Two, and then one's supposed to be in July. It's now moved to November because they can't get their bus, but they leased it off.
So that's a new one that they're waiting, or that's a, that's a quick return to the, yeah.
Which is normal, we can buy a bus under. With low miles.
The uh, so the gray vans, and then we've got, how many, two activity buses?
No, one activity bus.
Has that been, I mean, from your seat, has the activity bus been a better deal than the vans or, or you gotta have a mix of both?
Depends on who you're talking to.
Yeah. The vans we're looking at currently in the state bid is around fifty-four thousand dollars a piece for the four transits. They're the same passenger quality as that uh activity bus. Although I think people would be more comfortable driving a transit van than they are the activity bus, the dual-wheel seats. I think that seems, yeah.
Cool, covers some of the, yeah. Uh it's not like driving your minivan or your little car, yeah.
No, we haven't looked at, what are the other ones? Eight passenger, the gray ones, I think.
Yeah, seven.
We haven't looked at, they'll be seven or eight, but is it eight with the driver, seven passenger? I don't know.
Yeah, it's eight with the driver.
Uh we haven't priced those out, but we have been looking at the state bid, just trying to get some numbers because we know they need replacement. We also know they won't be here anytime soon if we get on the waitlist. I guess they can't get partisan, they can't get in.
Very good. Any other questions on the, somebody has, wanna first put the crews over this deal?
What's the, Jamie, what's the big jump on the education fund from the Fed sourcing from last year? Was that COVID money? This goes from one point six to one point one.
It's a big drop?
Yeah, so we utilized um a big portion of those funds, so we dropped the amount of revenue, but also it's those title funds.
That's title fund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um I do want to point out that we got some new board members, I'm trying to go through the, please just call if you have questions, I know we'll have time to look at it, we'll have it again in August. And uh, uh but we should talk about uh Fund Fifty, which is I M R, Social Security, if I remember correctly, when we redid our bonds. We went out and got working cash and we did that, but in order not to raise our tax rate, we dropped what we levied for in I M R and Social Security. And remember that, so that's where you see that deficit. We're spending down reserves uh in there, so we didn't offset it.
So that was required in order to not raise taxes?
Yeah, we did it so we didn't have to do it in with a tax rate. Yep, we absolutely did. And, and to be good stewards.
Right.
In, in that fund. Uh we were getting a reserve that we, we thought it needed to be more equalized.
Yep. All right, so this fall then we're back to uh everybody's buying her own lunch.
There's some talk out there that something may change. That said, no, okay.
Was that, that was a fed level, right?
It was, it was, but there was some talk at the state level that they might use some kind of funds for the state alone. That helps.
All right. Uh no other questions, we'll move on. All right, looks like we're at the financial reports. Jamie, you're still in hot seat here.
All right, so a lot of our financial reports uh lead to projections and so forth, end of the year, and to be the summary of how we ended. Uh you'll notice that the fund balances are pretty healthy and we were looking into that while we were preparing budgets and realized that we have enough in reserves to float an entire school year, which has been a goal of ours since we got here. Like we arrived, uh the state funding was so unpredictable, that school district had to estimate how they could stay open, which we've heard us talk a lot about in the last couple of years. So uh this is the first year we've ended uh with that one's executive um sustainance for the whole year. We're really proud to report.
So if the state doesn't show up money, we're not worried about paying payroll.
Yes, right.
So that's.
We'd be able to survive, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's a very good thing.
Uh some other areas where costs came in a little less than expected, that you might um wonder about special ed, our special education areas. Were quite a bit lower than we've seen in uh previous years. I just recently was reviewing our enrollment and it is down a little bit, so that's what the savings are. But we're gonna continue to budget as we have because those can change at any time. Pretty, so, uh services and supplies didn't quite return.
Tell me something, you, you'll explain that. That is um, we're not sending students off for special ed.
Right.
Where the cost is, not that we're not giving the services, we just don't have.
So, and we do, we have to supply maintenance effort every year. That shows that overall we're still spending. We're not um reducing our spending for special ed, but just uh specifically for those tuition services, they're down, which are more expensive. And then services and supplies didn't quite return to uh a typical year last year with things still not being available or um and professional development services were still down quite a bit and supplies, things are on hold, they're not coming through as quickly. So we didn't spend as much money in that year as we typically do. And then also our construction funds, fund field, our expenses were quite a bit lower than in previous years because we didn't have as many projects last year. So just some areas to note and then uh I'll end with some good news on facility tax, the last three months have been higher than any year ago, so.
The one percent stuff.
It keeps going up.
The one good side of inflation.
That's what's happening.
Yeah, that's what, uh but. Very good. Anybody have any questions for Jamie?
Who'd be sure, we're good with that.
Um we, we've made no change yet. I believe we're going to be having a finance committee.
Talk about this, okay.
Soon and discuss what our options are. Uh Black Hawk, they can trust our interest rates gone up very significantly there, so there might be even um in short term, we want to move it to uh cash account where we're getting some interest without um having to really invest yet. There might be options there.
Do we need to give you a blessing to do it or you just do it?
No, we can do that. We need to get a.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah.
I suggest. It'll be your mark and it'll be tracked by Jamie's, the interest in someone.
Very good. All right, uh discussion items. Student board members.
There's not a whole lot here. Uh Katie put that out last spring after we discussed it. Uh I believe we have six.
Six or seven applicants.
Yeah, so basically demonstrate why, I just want to make sure the board, how, how you'd like to do it. We've had a board member sit in, we've done interviews on all them applied, or Katie and I have given ourselves this. Interest on sitting in that, or Katie and I will proceed and.
Refresh my memory, how, how many are we gonna have? Are they gonna?
It always depends, it always depends. We did interview some years, we've always had two, I believe. One year we had one interview, that way if they couldn't be here.
Are they gonna be on the whole year then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. So they would be expecting to be here for the September meeting?
Probably, that's probably reasonable.
Yeah.
In the past, Janet, Janet said, I'll interview those Katie and I have done before. And we interviewed every student and went through, it was real simple, kind of them, you know, why you want to be a board member, what have you done for the school or in the school, where your commitments are, what your time committed.
I would think that we should have a board member present if we're, you know, if we want them to be part of our board, we should, one of us. It don't mean it's that much to ask.
They can initiate, yeah.
Answering questions for them.
You may have this group, one of them. I can put it out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to, I guess, why don't you, why don't you throw that out to the board?
I will.
And see if anybody else, if wants to do it, because I'm, I don't want to run rush hour. I mean, I, I want some, I want a board member here. And it doesn't have to be me, if one of you wants to do it, be happy to. Except that I won't.
No, that's fine. And then we'll target to do it and when we get back in schools, we have, we kind of do that mock seating. They take an oath, but it's not though that you take.
Right.
They don't have the financials and all that kind of stuff. They don't vote. Uh yeah, I can use them quite a bit. Katie does them as well, um you know, what I'm hearing, what you, what you see and.
Very good, yeah.
You can do that, if you want to get interested. Okay, I just want to get a feeling for how you want to do it, if you want to just see without asking.
That's, that's good. Summer projects.
Yeah, we got probably a lot in this one that um these are detailed, be unbelievable, but progressing. They're moving along. Stephen and Derek Tubert did uh tonight, we're in the meeting as part of the building grounds committee. Um you're welcome. We'll walk around after we're done and we'll be glad to say we want to go. Um down the science area, they got the new windows are in, they're installed, they started dropping some ceiling grid in a couple of classrooms, Jay Bizarre is pretty deep coats. Lighty is supposed to show up this week. They dropped in, they did ceiling tiles, painter on site today. Um Drew's at Wila, runs it for Oz Construction, that's our construction management group. Andrew was not as stressed today as he was earlier uh last week, but uh.
It's a cold paint, probably.
Yeah.
Getting close, yeah, that's right.
Uh it's gonna come down to the wire, um no doubt about it. The lab equipment, as far as the tables in the chemistry lab and the biology lab, they're on track, be delivered, right? And they've been on track the whole time. We'll keep our fingers crossed on that. The equipment that we, that we're providing is all here, it's in the egg shop. That's all been delivered. Uh, that's tables, chairs, acid cabinet, maybe fire, correct me, Katie?
Acid.
Yeah, whichever one of them. And, um, whiteboards and so on like that, so, um, it's a big change down there. We probably should, at some point, it was mentioned tonight on walk around, we probably should have some sort of open house, because it's a huge change. I don't know, the kids that are actually in the school are gonna recognize some of those areas when they come back. Leak times on doors are enormous. Uh, right now, they'll have all temporary doors. They're gonna be Steve holding the simple wood.
Flat ceiling doors?
Yeah. Outside, and entry doors as well, so, uh, there's a leak time on that, but they have doors and stop, trains are here. That way, we can have the R O E come in and sign off on it. Uh, there was some discussion, just so you know, on fire alarms and strobes. Big leak time on that. They're able to use what we currently have, will still be in our system. Attached until they can swap the house. That was the one I was really upset about three weeks ago, liner, that way, you gotta do something. Can we keep the old stuff? Cause we gotta open school
Yeah.
in August, and you have to, the R O E's not gonna sign off. Yeah.
So they empty that over Christmas break?
Possibly. It's across the hall, the ventilators for the ceiling. They'll leave that open, uh, for there. Possibly. Scott's got one teacher over there. Possibility, maybe we'll relay Kate. If it doesn't take too long, where they come over here, uh, for a week or something, so they can get it in and get it out, or it could be Christmas break, so maybe Thanksgiving, right down Thanksgiving. You would better not get there. You should do that kinda version, probably, so.
Probably, we can do that.
Yeah. And they, they suggested that. We've talked about being flexible when we move a classroom. I know we use the other side for interventions and things. I'm speaking quickly, Scott. So that might not be ideal, but if we could do something like that, we probably would, get the work done. Blood weights in the interior room, in that room before you were suffocating in. So hopefully this, that corrects that. Uh, new water heaters that was down off the, uh, in the Fresh, what we call the Freshen Hall, over the, one of the junior high gyms, River Gym down there, they're in. Uh, they've been installed. I don't think they're ready, up and working, but they're working on that today. Uh, the snap we ran into was the South Gym Roof. We had several leaks as they were doing that. On the east side, I'm thinking right there, east side, uh, we got some water damage before.
Gym floor?
Yeah. It's buckled it. But basically underneath the bleachers. Uh, I talked to the roofing companies, uh, insurance company today. Keith or Florence, we installed that, and that's also who seals it every year for us. They're sending someone down, give a price on replacement of that section. They want to replace the whole floor. But first, they gotta get somebody in there, get the moisture mitigated, and then, uh, have them replace that. But that would require pulling the bleachers from the wall, and they walk them out. And then do that. Now, the good news is, we're still be able to use the gym. That's probably the best news. I don't know when that work is gonna be done. Keith or tells me. We can't tell you right now when we can get down there, and we can't just shut it down in the winter. You know, and say, oh, you got two weeks. No, we got, there's too many things going on, as everybody knows here. So it may be a summer, but bleachers still went out in and for now. There's more swelling, but I predict there'll be more swelling. I think they'll get some of it, you know, they go down over there. It may be a summer project, though. Katie and I discussed today, maybe if we had a week at Christmas, maybe we could do that, cause it's term school and all things. But I don't think a week would probably be enough. I don't know. Right, right. I mean, I know we got the north gym, but, um, that gym's heavily
Yeah, you're asking, you're not exactly the long gyms.
No, no, it's heavily used, so, uh, we'll work through that. Paddock is the bleacher company, and we use a certified bleachers. I've gotta call them, what would it cost? That's who took it out last night. I've done bolt them, and then walk them out.
And I'd be okay if they just fell apart when they walked them out, so we'd have
We discussed that long and hard.
Oh, did I say that out loud?
Having a long and hard discussion. As well, so, um, kinda where we're at, I think. I'll make sure I didn't miss anything I wrote down. I wanna make sure.
So is that?
Keep you updated.
Done them, or are they still with that?
They were on, they were supposed to be done Thursday. We heard them up there today, still. They were still working.
Yeah, there was a section open today over that southwest balcony.
And what happened on that floor was all behind the bleacher. Well, they had a tarp down, for whatever reason, I cut across the tarp. Cause we had, we knew there were some water other places that Dale and Chris had caught, cleaned up, ran fans on, so we wouldn't have a problem. I walked across that floor, and I put the hecker underneath this tarp. I peeled the backs myself, the back, so it was covered, so we had no idea that there was any.
So it sat there longer?
Yeah. But my value, air into it. They knew it's on them. What I'm working on now is re-ceilings, I believe, next week. What we're looking at. What can they do for us? So we got at least the main floor ready to go. And, and the other side, the west side. Kinda where we're at.
Alright. Alright, uh, threat assessment. Team, have protocol.
Yeah, so Public Act one, two, dash, zero, seven, nine, one was passed this June. So basically, I put that information in there just so you had prior knowledge. December of two thousand nineteen, the board at that time approved our, our procedure. It's in there, in your packet, and also the team. Basically, now this is a yearly requirement. You have to do it every year. So you most likely bring back, I sent Deputy Razzle as well, but we'll probably bring back the same, uh, protocol we've used in one time. On if, if there's a threat that we deem a team need to be called for. And that's the procedure that you saw in, in your board packet. And then we have to list the team members. Now Deputy Razzle will share that with the county. To put off the local police. And the board just has to approve it. And which you break out in two thousand nineteen, now it's in here.
What time, do we have to do that prior to school starting, or when do we have it?
Uh, we'll have it, actually. We'll have it on the office. On Amy's office. If you're looking over and have questions, please let me know. Mike was the one that, uh, went to the train on that and put those together. You see the name all over it. Did a good job with that, and put the reputation here originally. Deputy Razzle looked at it, thinks it's pretty complete. That, I think it's out of Virginia, if I'm recalling right on, it's in my package, but, uh, that's pretty common standard. Now, on August first, I will tell you that we are region two as far as superintendent region. I'm going to be on a webinar representing region two, uh, with the school safety listing tour. I don't know what other superintendents, but they have some volunteers that would be here. Are they offering money? You know, we put in different protocols we need to. I should have more. Maybe I'll know more after that. I don't know, sometimes you don't, but, uh, I will be representing us in our region on that listing tour.
That's on the first of August.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's all I have on that. I just wanted to make sure you had that ahead of time. And some of you, some of you weren't here, but I just knew what the background was on that, and they made it here. Yearly requirement, it wasn't before.
Alright, very good. Well, uh, looks like next, next up on the dock is the closed session here. So, so we talked, uh, we'll need a motion to adjourn to closed session. Uh, we're in accordance with, uh, chapter five, Illinois Mean Act. We discuss personnel, student discipline, litigation, collective bargaining. Can I get a motion to, uh, adjourn to closed session?
Sure.
All in favor?
Hi.
Are we staying?
I think we need to stay tonight. Uh, Katie, can we just open your office if people want to
Absolutely.
It may be a while in closed session, just so you know. For discussion, just in case those commitments that ground might be a little there.
I'll go up in the conference room.
Okay, thank you.